Councilmember Mann?
I wanted a clarification from Mr. Hood, or maybe from Ms. Brenner. I thought, I didn't think it was Ecology that was saying it's unfeasible to do the 87 percent. It's that the county sent a letter to Ecology saying that it's not feasible to do the 87 percent.
Yeah, but, right. But you also said that, you know, that now, well, we've been saying that all along, so why suddenly have you seen the light? So I do think, I'm sorry, I think you meant it might be unfeasible even for you guys.
Yeah, I'm always more optimistic perhaps than justified. And I'm often surprised by how right I was by being optimistic. But what is different is Wachem County told me in their comment that they did not believe it was feasible to meet 87 percent. So my great support previously for the water quality offsets was based on the idea that you would, in good faith, go and attack that 87 percent after we've dealt with the new development. And that's been, you know, our agreement all along. It's like, we've understood that new development is just a matter of, you know, digging our hole a little bit deeper, and that that's our first step, is to stop digging the hole deeper. And then we would next move on to the 87 percent. And so I just wanted to qualify that while I think it's a great idea to put the resources where they're going to do best, and the idea of the homeowners' association taking on that role of balancing the reductions from the land across the homeowners' association is a great idea. I think in light of your concern that you may not be able to meet the 87 percent, you really need to look at that whole picture when you deal with the homeowners' association, not just the new development.
One other question for Mr. Hood, if I could.
You didn't say that one type of phosphorus is pollution and another type of phosphorus is not, right? What you said is one type of phosphorus you have jurisdiction over, and the diversion phosphorus you do not have jurisdiction over.
Correct.
They're both relatively equivalent types of polluting phosphorus. Maybe some's soluble or organically available, or maybe it's bound up differently, but phosphorus is phosphorus. You weren't trying to say anything different, were you?
Okay, there's like four questions, kind of buried in that statement.
Get them all, answer them all.
Okay. The first is about the jurisdiction. Yes, you know, we don't regulate inter-basin transfers, and we cannot use a TMDL to impair a water right. Phosphorus, you know, is a pollutant, but it's also a necessary, we would have no fish at all in Lake Wachem if we had no phosphorus at all. So it would not be healthy to have no phosphorus. What we're looking at is, you know, matching that natural level of phosphorus. And so in fact, you know, as Councilmember Crawford pointed out, you know, we're targeting about, and now I've gotten to the loss of all the numbers, and I'm still suffering from a cold, whether it's 3,000 pounds or 3,000 kilograms coming from that watershed. You know, that's more or less the natural level of phosphorus that comes from within that watershed. On the middle fork, the phosphorus that comes from the middle fork is somewhat different. And there's a number of things that make it somewhat different, and I'm going to kind of leave it a little bit fuzzy. It's mostly inorganic phosphorus that's attached to, you know, it's basically mineral phosphorus. So it's not as readily taken up. Now, it doesn't mean it can't be taken up, because, you know, our trees grow out in forest soils, and they're always extracting phosphorus out of the soil. But it takes longer to get that phosphorus, and it takes more energy than the organic phosphorus. So because it's basically ground-up rock, it's less available than the phosphorus that runs off of our landscape. The other thing that's going on is on those warm summer days, when the phosphorus is coming in from the diversion, that water's really cold. If you've ever gone and stood in that creek on a summer day when the diversion's running, it's chilly. That's because it's glacier water. So it actually, you can see as it flows into the lake, it sinks down, and it basically is going to meet at that bottom layer of the epilimion. So it's not really in that photic zone where the runoff that occurs during the summer occurs. So it's probably not as active. So there's a number of things that make that diversion somewhat different. The other is that, you know, over the long haul, we've seen the diversion quantities drop and our water quality decline. So, you know, we may be seeing evidence that, in fact, the water that the diversion brings in creates as much assimilative capacity as it uses. So the final thing is about the phosphorus is phosphorus and what's natural. You know, early on, we looked at water quality trading, and we got a grant from EPA, and they really, they identified the middle fork diversion as the biggest potential for a water quality trade. And our program said, well, that's not available for trade, because if you can reduce the phosphorus that's in that diversion, then that should be adjusting what our natural condition is. And so that's really what it comes down to. Unless our administration is changing that, until we establish a TMDL and kind of fix where we are, you know, we're kind of in a state where if we are going to say that diversion is being operated differently, then our natural condition is going to also change.
Well, the diversion isn't natural.
Executive Laus wanted to make a comment.
Yes, if I may. The TMDL study, I understand, started in about 2009. The county asked a series of questions of Ecology at that particular time. We've had very sporadic interaction with Ecology from 2009 up until when the draft report was released here just a few months ago. We sent a letter just in the last little bit, and I had to ask that our public, Assistant Public Works Director, Chris Bruzky, speak to that, because he pended, and his signature is on it, that basically asks the same series of questions again, that identified that we need answers to these before we can figure out whether we can come to this, come into compliance with what's asking of the TMDL. Along with that, we had a meeting of various department heads with the Director of Ecology, the Regional Director, and the local manager here a few weeks ago, and got the head nod from the Director that they were going to work with Wachem County as they worked through these issues before issuing the final report on the TMDL. So given an opportunity to expand on that, I'm very curious concerning some of Mr. Hood's comments tonight, and would like the opportunity to talk to him and to talk to Ecology about the TMDL report. But I'd ask if the council would be obliging to listen to Chris Bruzky just to kind of explain what was in that letter and why we sent it concerning the TMDL.
Madam Chair, while he's coming up, I just wanted to clarify, because Steve and I were confused on the numbers, the, I just pulled up the TMDL. The current annual loading, well, the 2003 model year annual loading, is 8,708 pounds of phosphorus going into the lake total. That's from development and natural conditions, and the target of natural conditions only is 5,575 pounds. So the reduction that is being asked for is 3,133 pound reduction. When, I'm starting to understand now, when Mr. Hutchings about a year ago said that his recollection, and I don't know if he even wants me quoting him, because it was probably off the cuff, but I think he said it represented about 22 percent. This 600 and some pound number that the city, that he's saying, that maybe the city had and maybe was used in the TMDL is about 20 percent of that 3,133 pound reduction. So what Ecology wants to see is a 3,133 pound per year reduction in the current loading of 8,708 pounds.
Excuse me. Chris Bruzky, Public Works. I just, I guess briefly, would like to just clarify what our comments actually were on the TMDL, because I think they're either being mischaracterized or misunderstood. As the executive said, we submitted a series of comments on the first draft of TMDL in 2009. These are extremely complicated comments, both technical and procedural issues that we had raised about the way certain things were calculated, about the procedure that the entire TMDL process was going through. Those comments were largely not addressed by DOE in 2009. So our comments that we resubmitted last month were essentially the same. Couple of small tweaks here and there, but Councilmember Brenner, I think, was correct when she said that, that there was really nothing new, earth-shattering, in our latest comment letter. What we asked for in that comment letter, and I will get you guys, I'll email you a copy of our comment letter tomorrow, was the final paragraph where he said, "We ask basically for Ecology to sit down with us at a table and work through these very, very technical and procedural questions that we've had and address them. Don't gloss them over. And by doing that, we'll maximize our chances of succeeding in implementing this TMDL." And this is obviously a very high priority for us to succeed in doing this, but there's certain ways, or certain technical issues in here that need to be resolved. And that's what we've asked for, and that's what we asked the Director of Ecology for, is just to commit to sitting down with us, not sending out a comment sheet that largely ignores our comments, and sending it on to EPA for finalizing. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to refer this to the Natural Resources Committee. Is there any further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes six to one with Councilmember Weimer opposed. Thank you all for your testimony and your information and your time tonight on that issue.
Oh, I know. We should have been there.
Okay, so moving on to our second public hearing, we have an ordinance establishing the Superior Court Fourth Judge Courthouse renovation project and establishing a project-based budget for the Fourth Judge Courthouse renovation project. And is there a staff that wishes to make a report to us tonight? I'm not seeing one. So I will open the public hearing. Executive Laus, did you want to say anything about the Fourth Court, Fourth Superior Court Courthouse renovation project?
Make it very brief. I'm excited that we have this opportunity to add the Fourth Superior Court Judge. To make that happen by January 1 of 2015, we need to work together. I've already convened meetings of the judges, court clerk, various groups within county government. We've gotten together and put the plan together, and I would encourage the council to make this, make this happen by taking positive action on the request tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have anybody signed up to speak at the public hearing. Did anybody wish to speak at the public hearing on this matter? Come on in.
Ellen Baker, Glacier. I just wanted to say I really-
Madam Chair, they can't do this with those people talking there.
Oh, okay. Can I ask people to please just continue conversations?
Just briefly to say that I'm very familiar with the backlog of cases, and I understand that this is a really important move. I would hope that this moves along very quickly. I'm not sure what's happening with the actual selection of the judge. We could have a judge. But we definitely need to have this courtroom, and I hope it has super high priority. I think that's fabulous. I just want to make sure that priority stays high. I know the legal community needs this courtroom. Thanks.
Want a clarification?
Go ahead, Councilmember Mann.
Are you actually telling us we're doing something right today?
Oh, I often do. Yes, she does, sometimes.
That is awesome.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else wish to speak to us about the Fourth Superior Court Courthouse renovation project?
I can think of some other people that could come up and support it.
No, I think we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. All right. So what are the wishes of the council?
Madam Chair, I move that the council adopt the ordinance establishing the Superior Court Fourth Judge Courthouse renovation project and establishing a project-based budget for the Fourth Judge Courthouse renovation project.
All right. Comments and discussion? Councilmember Brenner?
Well, I have to say, while I appreciate the comment about we do have a backlog, I have mixed feelings if we're not going to get some money from the state to help us out with this. But I was very impressed with the executive's comments today that actually doing, we'd need to do this whether we did a Fourth Court Judge Courthouse or not, because there's some improvements that have to be made. So I feel like the balancing act is fine. I still hope we can get some kind of grants or funds from the state to help with at least, you know, staffing it or something.
We're going to have to use REIT II money if we don't, right? Just kidding.
No, actually, you can't use REIT II money. Sorry, that's not a stormwater facility, you can't use REIT II money.
Well, it just brings up the, it does bring up the question, you know, the Bar Association, I believe, you know, was really, I was on a committee where they, several, for a couple of years ago, and Executive Kremen, I think, was part of that, where they really pressured us to do this. And I'm just wondering if the National Bar Association or something would have grants for this sort of thing. I mean, it's not beyond the realm of considering it would be logical that they would support, you know, municipalities having the resources for the interests that they advocate for.
Executive Laus?
If I may, it typically resides upon the local jurisdiction to provide the facilities and the support staff for the Superior Court Judge. Of course, the state will be picking up half of the Superior Court Judge's wages and the benefit package associated with that, and that's what they approved. I don't anticipate and don't know of any way that we're going to get state funding to help with the construction of it. And just as a note for the community to know, it, the governor will have the opportunity of making the first appointment to this, and then through the next election cycle, then the voters of Wachem County will continue to elect the Superior Court Judge.
Great. Councilmember Kremen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, Mr. Executive, it's my understanding that we will be able to realize some economic benefits or reductions in salaries. Are we not going to be reducing maybe at least one commissioner, possibly two?
We aren't, at this point, as far as I know, we are planning on reducing commissioners, but the judges have committed to putting the courtroom up and putting the electronic devices in necessary to do the video recording and the audio recording, which is going to reduce the staffing levels for the whole system. So they've made that commitment, and that's balancing out with the additional costs that we're going to have supporting the judge.
Well, proportionately, Mr. Executive, I think it would be prudent to take a closer look at how many commissioners we actually have compared to our population base, and I think that there's the potential for some savings realized thereby reducing at least one commissioner. At least, I think that ought to be looked at.
I'll take that under advisement, and I'll have the opportunity to talk with the judges concerning that at a future date. But thank you for bringing that up.
Councilmember Brenner?
Well, another thing I'd like you to look at, since you're looking at all this stuff, would be too, we have jobs that go away by attrition, and if we have some that are not as essential as this is, we need to do our priorities and our balancing act so we could maybe make it revenue-neutral by the time the judge gets appointed.
Okay, any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Sam Crawford?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Bill Knutson?
Yes.
Pete Kremen?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Moving on to our third public hearing, we have an ordinance amending Wachem County Code Title 20, the official Wachem County zoning maps, and the Wachem County Comprehensive Plan and Maps to Implement Changes Related to Rural Land Use Planning. Thank you. And Gary, are you going to give us a bit of a status report?
Yes, thank you. Just a brief presentation, Gary Davis, Wachem County Planning and Development Services. Tonight, I just want to briefly run through the issues that are in the ordinance that the council introduced on June 4, and also go over the schedule from the beginning of this phase through completion. First issue, a variety of rural densities. This is the one with the compliance order noted that only 21 percent of the rural area is zoned R-10A, and was concerned that there was no criteria in place preventing all of that area, all of that percentage, to be rezoned to a higher density. So proposed in the ordinance is Policy 2 GG 3. Changes to that policy would place criteria on the eligibility to apply for rezoning from R-10A to a higher density. And first one is that the average size of parcels containing a residence as of January 1, 2013, within 500 feet of the area to be rezoned is less than 7.5 acres. And that's designed to assure that a proposed rezoning would be consistent with existing rural densities in the area. Second one is that the proposed rezoning would not be in an urban growth area reserve. And the third one is that the proposed rezoning area would not be in a rural steady area. This is the chart that represents the way the breakdown is now of the rural lands. Up in the left-hand corner, you can see 21.8 percent is R-10A. That is as of now and as of the 2012 ordinance that was adopted. With this proposed change in policy 2 GG 3, that we estimate through a study of the R-5A to, excuse me, R-10A to R-5A eligible areas, that that current percentage of R-10A property, which is 21.8 percent, would not drop below 20.6 percent. And that's based on the study that I just passed out, and there is copies of this presentation, by the way, and that study at the back of the room. This was done today as a revision in response to comments that we received yesterday suggesting that mobile homes with value less than $10,000 be included in this because they are residential. So I revised that study to include those in the evaluation. Didn't make a lot of change to the outcome. There was one parcel that was added because of adding one of those parcels in to the 500-foot calculation. There was another parcel that was removed, and basically that number remains the same. So that is the report that you have in front of you, and that will be posted in color on our website tomorrow along with this presentation. Also under that study, I wanted to point out that there was some discussion last time about whether to specify whether this 500-foot perimeter would include parcels in an urban growth area, because we're looking at rural density. We had talked about, it would make sense, and it would probably be our interpretation as we go forward, that it would not, that the 500-foot would not include parcels within the urban growth area. I double-checked our calculation on the Kitec property, and the original calculation had included a few parcels in the Bellingham UGA. So I recalculated that, and the revised average lot size within 500 feet goes from 7.1 acres to 7.4 acres. So just wanted you to be aware of that. Second issue is lot clustering. The compliance order said that the county's reliance on clustering as a measure to protect rural character is misplaced because the clustering provisions lack enforceable criteria, and that the resulting reserve tracts are not permanently protected. They particularly cited the existence of aspirational language, things like "should" and "where practical." So our response to that is to apply the required reserve area percentage to a reserve area easement on a plat, but not the reserve tract itself. Reserve area percentages, because of that, reserved area percentages are reduced slightly to account for a change in the ability to develop within the reserve area. And also, we removed the aspirational wording that the hearings board was talking about, the "shoulds," the "where practical," and changed those to more enforceable criteria. Number three, Lake Wachem, we've had quite a bit of discussion on that already. This is related to that. We're proceeding with the item that you just discussed earlier. That's at the heart of issue three here, and that's how we're addressing this issue. Issue four, rural neighborhoods. The compliance order from our 2012 ordinance found that the designation of rural neighborhood was in compliance with the GMA, but found that three of the rural neighborhoods that were created, the Fort Bellingham Marietta, the North Bellingham, and Wachem, have boundaries that include larger parcels. The board remanded the ordinance to the county to consider redrawing those boundaries. And this gives the language of the compliance order. So the proposed boundaries, as were arrived at on June 4, when the ordinance was adopted, are shown here. Fort Bellingham Marietta, parcels to the west and to the northeast are proposed to be removed from the rural neighborhood boundary and go to rural, and they would be rezoned to remove the asterisk, the overlay designation, the rural residential density overlation. And to rezone some of the area, but not all of it, to, from two-acre zoning to five-acre zoning, some of it's already five-acre zoning. North Bellingham, similar situation. Parcel boundaries are drawn to exclude some of the larger parcels on the perimeter. Wachem, this is one where the rural neighborhood designation is removed altogether. And here are some figures for the rural neighborhoods, the results of these changes. And you can see here in both Fort Bellingham and North Bellingham, there are some pretty significant reductions in terms of total acres, in terms of the number of parcels greater than five acres, the potential for new lots to be created within these larger parcels, and also that the average developed, the average size of a developed parcel goes down slightly in each case. So it obviously stays under our one or 2.5 acre criteria for designating a rural neighborhood. Issues five, six, and seven, no, under the ordinance that was introduced last time on the 4th, no action is being proposed on these. The council added a conclusion in the ordinance document and the findings and conclusions that says the county and property owners in the affected areas have appealed several issues on which the board found the county out of compliance. With the adoption of this ordinance, the county has opted not to take action on these issues on appeal, and at the present time, does not intend to take action until they are reviewed by the courts. Last issue, issue eight, water lines. Compliance order found that our amended code provision fails to comply with state law because transmission lines would be allowed outright throughout the rural area without transmission being defined as excluding a service connection. They also noted that there's a provision in the health code that requires service connections to adjacent transmission lines. Response to that is that 2082-030-3B permits extension of water lines for rural uses, but prohibits extension of water lines for urban uses. And that's in conformance with the GMA definitions of rural and urban governmental services, because water is both an urban and a rural governmental service. So we use the GMA definitions of those very closely. Also, we added a new definition to 2097. It's 2097-452, water transmission lines, and that is a verbatim definition right out of the WAC, the Washington Administrative Code. And finally, changed the health code, proposes changing the health code, changing references from transmission lines to water lines. Our schedule up to this point, we've had several work sessions and public hearings. We had a public hearing on March 28 with the Planning Commission, had a public hearing on May 21 with the County Council, and tonight is our third public hearing on this issue. Compliance deadline is July 3, and sometime in October, maybe as soon as August, a compliance hearing is going to be scheduled. That's it for the presentation. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you, Gary. Councilmember Knutson?
You know, and the changes to the water transmission lines, where the, no service connections are allowed along the transmission main, is that for existing as well?
Existing transmission lines?
Well, if there's hookups to the existing transmission main, is that going to create an issue?
I would have to look at the language. I don't have it. We discussed it quite a bit last time, I believe.
Okay. And you say this came from where? This language you referenced?
The language that defines transmission lines is right out of the- The language that defines transmission lines is right out of the Washington Administrative Code, the WAC.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Did you have questions? Councilmember Cramon?
Madam Chair, I feel hesitant to do this, but...
We have to have a public hearing.
Okay. I'll defer any comments or ideas or thoughts until after we hear from the public.
Yes, yes. These are just clarifying questions for Gary. So seeing none, I'll let Gary sit down and open the public hearing, and we've got two people signed up, Laura Lee Brockie and Brad Swanson. So Laura, you want to come?
This has been a long process, and you can see how many public hearings we've had, how many people can actually keep the stamina to show up for this. I don't hardly have the stamina, but I did show up. And during the course, I suggest that we use the money in Item 11. That Finance Committee was going to review the $40,000 to $90,000 of more money to fight growth management. We could turn that to the Fourth Superior Court Judge. My recommendation on that. I'm really asking you not to spend any more taxpayers' money fighting a good law. So I do believe in the power of laws, and I believe that laws are not just the purview of lawyers, but that citizens should be able to read them and understand them, and that we should expect that our local officials will enact those laws. We've spent a lot of time fighting growth management. Why not give it a chance to work? So I guess I better put my glasses on. Actually, Kathy Kirchner had a comment about special interests, and you do know that I'm a party to the Hearst at all because I believe in the power of laws. When I read a law and I see people aren't following it, that's why I'm part of that. I don't think that's a special interest. So I'd say a special interest is when you have your property listed in the body of an ordinance, and you have a lawyer who's fighting for you at every hearing, whether it's afternoon or night because they're paid to come there. Most citizens can't keep up with this overlong process. And many of the folks that are asking for upzone and don't want to downzone never...
Thirty seconds, please.
They're right. Oh, boy. So anyway, I don't think I'm a special interest, and Watcom County is a very unique piece of the world, and I think we should protect it. And my special interest is making sure laws are followed, that all five Pacific salmon continue to come back to our streams. Not too many places that have that ability, and we're losing it.
Time. And... Thank you, Laura. Brad Swanson?
Thank you very much, members of the council. Brad Swanson, the Beltrus Swanson Law Firm, here on behalf of Doug Puller, the Bouloses, and Smith Gardens. I'm not going to recite the materials that have been submitted on these issues already. I just will note for the council that today, Mr. Puller's supplemental declaration was submitted to this council for your consideration tonight. But tonight, I simply ask that the council finish its work on this ordinance and pass it. Thank you very much for your hard work on this.
Clarifying question? Councilmember Crawford?
I read that prior to the meeting, and I didn't understand it. It was simply Mr. Puller saying that he bought that lot for investment purposes, but it didn't tie that reasoning with the GMA Growth Management Act. I didn't understand what that had to do with the Growth Management Act and what we're trying to comply with.
As you know, Councilmember Crawford, the record upon which appeals are taken is made here. So Mr. Puller is perfecting his record in case there is further dispute with the Growth Management Hearing Board in this matter.
So that's your story, and you're sticking to it? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to us on this ordinance? Come on up.
Kate Blystone, Futurewise, Watcom. We submitted our letter today, and we submitted it today because basically it's the same as almost every other letter we've submitted in the last couple of weeks on this issue. We have a number of concerns remaining with this ordinance. The proposal in front of you today, first, on the variety of rural densities, you know that you were found out of compliance based on not having adequate protections to prevent rezones from R10 to R5, putting it basically. So we have some suggested language for that. The proposal is fairly good, but we think that there should be more consideration for some of your natural resource lands. So we've added four criteria, and I'll read those to you very quickly, not in complete, but first, we think that the proposed rezone should not be adjacent to existing area designated rural resource lands. So various, the resource land criteria. The area has a rural comprehensive plan designation. We think that would be an important criteria to include into the variety, or the criteria for rezones from R10 to higher densities. No priority habitats excluding streams or rivers based on GIS database from fish and wildlife. And then finally, the area is not closed to appropriation of service water and groundwater for reasons that probably should be obvious. So we think that the criteria that we're adding would protect rural character, and the hearings board said, quote, "measures to protect rural," that the plan lacked, quote, "measures to protect rural character to contain rural development." So in addition to that, we think that it would be wise to adopt instead staff's recommendation for the rural neighborhoods and the lammers that you're looking at tonight for issue four, six, and seven. The hearings board was fairly clear on these issues, and I really think that it would be in your best interest to come back with something different than what you came away with last time. Finally, one other issue is that, and we've said this, and I mentioned it earlier, that we don't think that cluster zones should, clusters should be greater than eight lots, and we cite some case law for that in our, in our letter. So I urge you to look at that. And finally, we recognize that it's going to take you some time to incorporate these changes and maybe others that are presented tonight, and we wanted to let you know that we would support an extension of time for compliance. So if you do file for an extension, Futurewise would be in support of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Come on up. Yeah, can you please line up if you're going to speak to us?
Good evening. David Stahlheim, Watcom County. And, you know, I didn't want to come here tonight because you guys offend us by your comments that you're making. You calling us special interests, calling us domestic terrorists in public settings, not listening to our comments, not reading our stuff. Mr. Swanson just talked about perfecting the record. That's what we're doing. So we submitted information on takings issues with respect to Mr. Boulos's property. So if that's the kind of game that you want to play, and you want to play hardball, we will do that. And it's going to be long, and it's going to be expensive as part of that. I'm kind of hoping that there might be four reasonable minds that will sit down and talk about this because, actually, you're pretty close on a lot of these issues. There's compliant pass for Mr. Boulos. I gave that to Mr. Swanson three, four years ago. He thought it would take too much work to do, so he'd rather litigate it. You chose building sizes in the guide meridian area that cause challenges. If Mr. Cramon remembers, we actually had building sizes that allowed grocery stores to 35,000 square feet when we passed an ordinance in 2009 at the Planning Commission level. That went poof when this council, previous council, Mr. Cramon wasn't on, evaporated all those things and had unlimited sizes. You create holes, kind of like the 87 percent of the Lake Watcom thing. You dig holes, and then you dig them deeper. Take the time out right now. You have some time. Get an extension. Futurewise just said the same thing, that they would agree to it. I'm sure our party would agree to it. If there's four reasonable minds, sit down and see if we can hash this out. Stop offending us. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to us?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I, in lieu of the fact that the previous speaker was admonishing and chastising the County Council, which I think is inappropriate, I believe in free speech, but I also would like an opportunity to respond at whatever time you think would be appropriate.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind. Wendy?
Mr. Cramon, you're not going to like what I have to say then. We live in a country ruled by law. These laws are not optional, and they cannot be opted out of because of a good-faith ideological disagreement. Yet that is the course of action repeatedly chosen by the council majority. Council needs to set an example for our citizens and ensure compliance with the rules that hold our society together by respecting the institution of government at all levels, federal, state, and local. Instead, council has attempted to undermine public respect for the integrity of our system of government by ridiculing the hearings board delegated authority under state law. You have criticized and ridiculed those who have challenged the council under the very legal procedures that were lawfully established. In these actions, you have failed the public by mocking the very system of government under which you were elected. And even worse, you're doing this with somebody else's money. You have shown disregard for the high cost of your irresponsible behavior and refusal to comply with state law. It is time to stop protecting developers in their attempts to skirt the laws intended to protect public health and safety, and time to start spending money coming into compliance with the GMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Does anybody else wish to speak to us? Seeing nobody rising, I will close the public hearing. And what are the wishes of the council?
I'll move...
Councilmember Crawford?
Well, I'll move approval of the overall ordinance. I think probably a number of us would like to propose some amendments or changes based on the hearing tonight, but for the sake of discussion, I'll move the entire ordinance.
Okay. So the ordinance is moved. Does anybody wish to propose changes or amendments?
Well...
Councilmember Crawford?
That said, I've got one, but it's not based on something that was said tonight. It was something that I read, I discovered, and I did have a brief discussion with Gary Davis before the meeting tonight. Page 713 of the packet, which is 2036-305. Yeah, lot clustering. We had an exception that, as far as I can tell inadvertently, the exception got left out on item number three under 2036-305. Item number three begins with the words lot clustering. It's about in the middle of the page. Okay, it used to read, and this is not, unless Mr. Davis, after contemplating, and this is a couple hours ago I talked to him, but at the time he was thinking about it, the change that caused this language to be changed was because we don't use the term short-term planning area and long-term planning area anymore. But what happened in the way this got worded, it left out an exception to being required to cluster that has not been commented on by the hearings board and was not part of the response to the hearings board. So I'll read it the way it used to read, and then I'll read what the change is, and I'll describe what got left out. Item three used to read, lot clustering is required for residential developments on parcels 10 acres or greater when A, the property is located within a short-term planning area and public water and sewer are not available, or B, the property, I'm sorry, yeah, the property is located within an urban growth area reserve, I'm sorry, the property was located within a long-term planning area. And understand that we're excluding the requirement for clustering, I'm sorry, we are requiring, excluding, let me, I had it backwards because I'm still trying to track this. We're requiring clustering, used to require clustering in short-term planning area when public and water and sewer were not available, and in a long-term planning area, period. What we, in changing this to now read, lot clustering is required for residential developments on parcels 10 acres or greater when the property is located within an urban growth area reserve, we've left out that exclusion, that if they were served by public water and sewer, that they wouldn't be required to cluster. And to fix this, I don't think this is a substantive change, to simply add the words after the property is located within an urban growth area reserve unless public water and sewer are available. So it would now read, lot clustering is required for residential developments on parcels 10 acres or greater when the property is located within an urban growth area reserve as long as public, in, public water, yeah, let me...
Unless, not a...
Unless, yes, unless, public water, because I keep reversing this, unless public water and sewer are available. So my motion is to add the words after the word reserve unless public water and sewer are available. Now, I'm going to suggest in defense of that motion to amend that this will impact practically no one, but the concern was brought up to me this past week by lot owners, and I, you got to remember, our urban growth area reserves are very limited in the county. They're kind of spread out. I was talking to Gary about where they're at. There's some around Sumas, there's some around Birch Bay. The area that has probably been most contentious is U Street, yes. And there are some parcel owners that are greater than 10 acres up there. As you know, they have been put on hold, probably indefinitely. They're in a limbo that makes it almost impossible to develop, and what those property owners haven't looked at now, with all the millions they've invested in the past that have not come to fruition, is simply developing at the density that we stated, that the city of Bellingham basically caused us to state there, which is one house per 10 acres. And this says they would be limited to doing that in a cluster. But we used to accept out, and that was a short-term planning area, we used to accept out if they had public water and sewer available. Now, whether they do or not, I don't know. I know it is the policy of the city of Bellingham not to extend utilities until the time of annexation. However, I believe that area was subject in the past to some agreed-upon developer agreements that may or may not be utility extension agreements, and I'm not sure that could be legally resolved, nor should we attempt to do that here tonight. However, I think we should change this language, and I believe Gary made, proposed this change, and it didn't get much discussion, simply to eliminate the concepts of short-term and long-term planning areas, but we neglected to allow that one exception, which is if you have public water and sewer, you are not required to cluster. So that is the basis for my motion. And I'm sure Karen has no idea what to think of all of that.
All right. Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah, it sounds interesting to me. Can we have a short executive session?
I'm sure Karen has no idea what to think of all that.
Well, I guess my question is, is would that be a substantive change? And seems like that kind of question.
I don't think I can answer that right now. Maybe Gary and I can step aside and talk about this a little more, and... Maybe Gary and I can step aside and talk about this a little more, and I will have a better idea. I mean, this has totally taken me by surprise.
Right, I have not, I only talked to Gary before the meeting tonight, and I have not had a chance to sit down with Karen on it.
I just want to clarify with the excepting, unless, what you're proposing is, is it the same as what was in place before for a short-term planning area?
Yes.
Or is it the opposite?
It's the same as what happened when they were, when they were in the short-term planning Those property owners, and I don't want to isolate this to a single property, those property owners were not required, that had 10 acres or more, were not required to cluster if they had water and sewer. And now we're saying that those same property owners would have to cluster, and we don't talk about whether or not they have water and sewer. Quite honestly, based on my experience and understanding of that area, I have significant doubts that they could get to that high bar of demonstrating to the city that they must provide water and sewer to those areas. It's not in the city limits. However, I don't understand why we would eliminate that exception. And I'm not even going to the issue that originally existed of why they were allowed that with 10 acre lots. I'm not even going to go there and try to talk about the history. I'm simply saying, I think we do a disservice to people to change the code in terms of how it impacts them when they've, these people in particular, when they've already been downzoned from four units per acre or whatever to one house per 10 acres, to add the additional layer that if they feel they've got a case and can make it to the city, that they have an agreement that the city will provide water and sewer, that they can't, that they're, have the added restriction of clustering. And again, I don't want to get into a debate as to why they were allowed that exception before. I'm arguing this based on, why would we make the change?
And so you're not proposing a change to what we have now? In effect, it's just what exists already.
He's proposing a change.
No, do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, are.
That is my intent.
Right.
Now, what they have now, if they want to make a case that they were in a short-term planning area, or they want to make a case that they do or don't have water or sewer provision, as far as I'm concerned, that's their problem. I'm simply saying, why would we change? And, you know, I heard from one property owner in that area, however, you know, as Gary pointed out to me before the meeting, we do have these in little pockets around the county, and this could impact other people. I don't know. We haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't received any testimony. I asked the people if they would come down here tonight and testify and put something on the record about it, but they're out of town today and are unable to do it.
Well, what we have today is the verbiage that is struck out, which refers to a short-term planning area, which we don't have anymore. So we wouldn't, I don't think, really have the option of leaving it. I suppose we could, I don't know that it would make much sense.
No, it wouldn't make sense. And so the urban growth area reserves are not, in all cases, the same thing as short-term planning areas?
No.
Yeah.
Again.
Short-term planning areas, long-term.
Right, right.
Some are. And I believe, and they believed, again, I'm just taking it face value, that they were in a short-term planning area, they're, and I think, I'm pretty sure the U Street UGA did not include any long-term planning areas, or if it did, they were on the east side of U Street, not on the west side. But I don't think they had really.
Short-term planning areas and long-term planning areas were located in UGAs.
Right, which they were.
That's how UGAs were divided out. In this case, this used to be part of a UGA.
Yes.
Now it's not, now it's an urban reserve. So it's a different situation.
I suppose if we really wanted to get diligent about it, I would make my amendment, and I'm just thinking out loud here, unless, unless they have public water and sewer and were previously in a designated short-term planning area.
That's one way to do it.
Can we do that? I mean, are we making good law, though, to force planning to go back and try to figure out what it used to be? Or, I guess we do that on occasion.
Well, basically, you're maintaining the status quo when you put language like that in.
Okay, okay, well, I'll change that to add the words, and, were previously in a designated short-term planning area. And were in a previously designated short-term planning area, should we put a date or a number of years that they were in it? For more than 10 years, that would be pretty safe to say about U Street. I don't think we need to add a timeframe on it.
Now, the other question is, is this something that we could do based on the introduced ordinance from June 4th, or is it something we could add tonight?
Well, if you're not changing what exists now.
Well, short-term planning areas don't exist now.
No, but in a bad.
But the qualifier that it had to have been in, I just added that qualifier, that they did exist at one time and it had to have been in it.
They don't exist now, is what I'm thinking.
Well, I know, but, but by adding that language, you're restricting that just to the areas that formerly were short-term planning areas and were, I don't see that you're substantively changing what exists now.
Well, it's the ordinance that we are working on that was introduced.
No, I mean, if you're not making a change to what the law currently is, then, then you don't have to have a public hearing to address that.
So my motion is to, after the word reserve, add the words, unless public water and sewer are available, and the property was entirely contained within a previously designated short-term planning area.
Okay, Councilmember Brenner.
I'm writing on the board, is the sounder in?
Yeah, maybe short-term planning area in quotes so that someone in the future will realize that, or with capital letters or whatever, so someone will realize that was a county, a previous county designation.
Well, I just want to, so you don't think it's substantive? I only, like, I'm looking at this, this is what we put on for introduction and what we've been working on. Is it okay to go to something else, even though it was something that was before?
Yes.
I don't know.
If you're not proposing a change to what currently exists, you don't have to have a public hearing to address it because it's not a change.
Because we haven't finalized it yet, is that it?
No, it's because this language basically reverts to the law that already exists. Right?
Not, not really, because we've changed it.
No, you're putting it back, by adding this language, you're putting it back to how it exists right now.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion on the motion to amend? Are people still thinking about it, or are we ready to vote on the motion to amend?
No, it's not substantive.
Councilmember Knutson?
Yeah, I'm unclear that, but previously it read, where public water and sewer are not available. So does that mean that we are making a change?
It was requiring clustering. This is.
Is requiring clustering.
It was requiring clustering in short-term planning areas when public water and sewer were not available. What they were trying to do was, was require clustering in long-term planning areas. And then, then they, someone had the thought, well, there's short-term planning areas and public and water and sewer aren't available, so they added that.
So.
But, so, the property owners in question that contacted me were sitting there saying, well, we believe we have an agreement with the city of Bellingham to extend services. We now want to pursue it. This will all be at their own cost, of course, but we want to do it at the, and the agreement is to extend services only to the existing zoning. This existing zoning is one house per 10 acres. However, when they look at moving forward with the proposal, we're saying they have to cluster, and under the old rule, they did not have to cluster. So this change makes it so that they will be accepted out of the clustering requirement, just like they were accepted out before. See, they didn't meet the requirement to cluster before because they had water and sewer. And you were only required to cluster in the short-term planning area if it was not available.
Okay, I'm still.
It's a double, it's like a double negative swapped over is what it is. It takes your mind a couple mental gymnastics to get it.
That's why I had a hard time saying it at the first, but I think the language.
But it's really not a change.
Would it be clear to say the property is located within an urban growth or reserve and public water and sewer are not available?
Yeah, I like that bit.
That was how you said it before. Are not available.
You're almost saying it backwards, Sam, and it might be the same thing, but it's confusing.
Let's type something up there and.
Well, if you read A under three.
See, that mirrors the language that is existing.
That was there.
Right. You could re-add, just re-add A for that matter.
Oh, so you would change A and change, get rid of the word short-term planning area and add the words.
Get rid of the word unless and add an.
Add the word urban growth area reserve.
Just put it back where it was.
The way it is now, it's just one sentence without an A and a B, and I think it works pretty well that way.
The property is located within an urban growth area reserve and public water and sewer are not available, and, it's a lot of ands, and the property was previously contained within a designated short-term planning area. Yeah, it's fine with me.
I'm fine with that, it's the same as it was.
It re, it does reestablish, it's a lot of ands, but it does reestablish the specific criteria that they, they could develop without clustering.
And the specific language.
And that's not changing the meaning, then, of the first phrase, that the property is located within an urban growth area is required to cluster, if we add all those ands?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Now, I'll remind you too, that if you do cluster and you go into an urban growth area, like an urban reserve should, then you can develop that reserve area. That reserve area easement does not, stays in perpetuity until, while it's in the rural area, but not when it goes into the urban growth area, so.
Gary, quick correction, you have to, since we turned it into a requirement for clustering, you have to change, and we've changed the water and sewer are not available, after the word property was, you have to say not previously contained within a designated, you have to add the word not. If we're going to add not on water and sewer, you've got to do, see, we're not going to require them to cluster. So it should say, lot clustering is required for residential developments on parcels 10 acres or greater when the property is located in, within an urban growth area reserve and public water and sewer are not available, and the, and the property was not previously contained within a designated short-term planning area. It reads pretty rough.
Reday again, because property is located within a short-term planning area and public water and sewer are not available.
Clustering is required if it's within and the stuff's not available.
It is within a short-term planning area and water and sewer are not available, and that's what we're saying here. Water and sewer are not available and the property was previously contained within a short-term planning area. Does that make sense?
I have one question.
Okay. It's tough to get your mind around.
Could we just keep A and put the property was previously located? And then get rid of all the rest of it under B that we've added? Does that make it clearer?
Property was located within a short-term planning area.
Was previously located, because we don't have short-term planning area.
Clustering is required for.
The property was previously, yeah.
Well, then that opens it up to all parcel, all properties that were at one time within a, if you use that or, it's either any parcel that was in a short-term planning area, or it's in an urban reserve, urban growth area reserve.
No, it's both.
Yeah, either or.
Yeah, you need to use and instead of or.
If that's what you're trying to do, is to say, if it's in an urban growth area reserve.
And was previously.
And.
Was previously in a short.
Public water and sewer are not available.
And.
And the property was previously contained within a short-term planning area.
That's.
I think you need all those ands, if that's what you're trying to do.
Then you need to do lot clustering. Okay.
Then it's required.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, that was, that was what I was getting at. I think Councilmember Kirchner is right. You're going to be required, the way that that sentence reads now, to have all those criteria.
Yep.
Whereas where it was established before, the wording that it was stricken, it was, the property is located within a short, within a short-term planning area and public water and sewer are not available, or B, the property is located within an urban growth area reserve. I think, I think the way it was originally in here is better than what's currently worded with the and, and, it reads like all three are required.
We got rid of short-term.
Gary, move your cursor, it's blocking the.
Oops.
There, thank you.
We, I thought we got rid of short-term planning area.
No, they, it's previously contained within a designated short-term planning area. It's still in there. And when, if you look at the way this was originally worded, if you look on page 713, and look at A, and then look at B.
I'm looking right at it.
And there, it said the property, and it was or.
But I thought when we did this.
I think I'd be comfortable, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Crawford.
I would just offer a friendly amendment that we re-add the wording the way it was originally worded with, the only, the only change is being to be striking long-term planning area at the end.
Councilmember Crawford.
I'm not going to make, accept as a friendly amendment.
Could I?
I just would like to suggest that you get rid of the and in front of public, because that would really infer that all three conditions need to be met. So it would read, lot clustering is required for residential developments on parcels 10 acres or greater when the property is located within an urban growth area reserve, comma, public water and sewer are not available, comma, and the property was previously contained within a designated short-term planning area. That would keep the law exactly as it sits today.
Yeah. Karen?
Well, Gary and I spoke about this briefly, and the problem with saying you're maintaining the status quo is that short-term planning areas don't exist, and so they haven't existed for some time, and so that particular criteria really hasn't had any meaning, and you're bringing that meaning back to life. And so I think it is changing things, and it would be a substantive change.
And what, okay, we're under some deadlines, aren't we?
So could we remove the, and the property was previously contained within the designated short-term planning area and still meet the same? No, I think it would be a substantive change.
Because now that really starts to change it.
You withdraw your motion, right, whatever it was.
I'll withdraw the amendment. I, you know.
Okay, what else?
It's just another, it is changing the situation for real people out there in Lockham County.
I thought you said you didn't even know if it was.
And it's not, it's a change that has not been required by the hearings board, has not been appealed to the hearings board, and is not responsive to. not been appealed to the hearings board, and is not responsive to the hearings board's orders, which is what we're trying to address. But granted, you know, if the fact that they used to be, you know, I think maybe what I hear, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here, maybe what I hear our attorney saying is, well, shoot, you could go back and look at a whole lot of past zoning criteria. My issue with this particular one is that past zoning criteria happened to sit there in today's code, even if the short-term planning area, I mean, we're talking about language that currently exists, and at least it's the perception of this property owner, they could move forward with what they thought was going to be four or six acre development, and now it's going to be one per 10 acre development without clustering. But I'll withdraw it. I can't think of a way to do it based on what our attorney just told us.
Councilmember Knutson?
Okay, well, then I have a, an answer that I'm going to run by Gary here. What if, the current wording on A, if we strike "the property is located within a short-term planning area," and, and just have "public water and sewer are not available," or "the property is located within an urban growth area reserve" for B, could we list A as just "public water and sewer are not available"?
I think we may have the same problem.
Why? We're not making a change.
You're, you're making some change.
Yeah, you are.
There.
What's the change?
Um...
All we're doing is we're deleting "the property is located within a short-term planning area," and, which was already in this ordinance, it's already in this.
But you're applying it to the whole rural area.
It still changes the meaning.
Yeah.
I believe.
It changes the meaning for lot clustering?
Yes.
Yeah, all we're doing is we're striking something...
For requiring it, yeah.
We're striking something that hasn't been used, short-term planning area, but the public water and sewer are not available, is something that has been...
I think what you're doing, though, is you're applying that "lot clustering is required for residential developments on parcels 10 acres or greater when water and sewer are not available." That would imply you're applying it to the whole rural area. Is that the intention? That you want to require lot clustering in the whole rural area? Because the property located within the short-term planning kind of narrows down where you're talking about.
So this would broaden it.
Well...
He withdrew his motion.
You're, if you, the way it currently reads would be that it's the only, "lot clustering is required when the property is located within an urban growth area reserve," um...
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why it would change it.
Because it broadens the areas.
No, Council, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Crawford?
I agree with what Councilmember Kirchner said. This is 2036, the rural district, and what these rules apply to the entire rural district.
Yeah.
So if it says this or this...
Right.
You know, what I, what's the difference, can I ask a question? What's the difference, Gary, between this and the lot clustering requirement of the ag protection overlay of 20 acres or more? Is this regulating lot clustering, um, oh, in urban growth area reserves only? Okay, I'm sorry, not the entire rural area, in the entire rural area that has urban growth area reserves, within those reserves? That's the only place this applies?
As currently written, but if we change...
The way the June 4th language reads.
Right. Okay, so...
No, I'm going to leave it alone. I can't figure out a way to do it, and based on our consultation here, I'm, I mean, I think we, I think we're under deadline. I think we need to get this passed, and I think, I don't see a way to do it without that substantive change that, based on some old planning terminology that doesn't exist anymore.
Okay, are there any other amendments or discussion on the ordinance?
Madam Chair?
Councilmember Cremmon?
I was going to actually ask for the council to reconsider the ordinance after the Crawford filibuster. I am ready to vote.
Okay. Councilmember Mann?
Well, before we vote, I just want to give one last attempt at mediation. Now, I know some people up here don't think it's a productive avenue. I, I just, I think sometimes we get in our trenches and we want to fight. I know I've been there in life and on the council, just, you just feel like you want to fight, and I relate to that. I just think there may be more to be gained in this process by sitting down with the folks who are advising us on these land use issues, and sitting in a room and finding out if there's a path to compliance, as Mr. Stahlheim said. I think we might get more that way than just keep going and going and going at the, at the Growth Management Hearings Board. So I, I would just like to put that out there one last time. I think that is, I think we might get more of what we want that way than just fighting.
Councilmember Knutson and then Brenner.
Yeah, mediation to me is, is a, I know, but arbitration is something I would look into. If we could get a legal opinion on this would be great.
Councilmember Brenner?
The problem, you have to appeal it or the clock runs out. That doesn't preclude us doing arbit, whatever, mediation, whatever you want to talk about. I think we could do both, but I don't want the clock running out and...
They offered to, tonight, they offered, or they indicated that they would support a request to extend for six months our deadline. That would also give us a chance to further investigate the Crawford filibuster, and perhaps, though, perhaps, a negotiated settlement where we get the bulos and the polar properties in. I mean, I think that's really the painful part of this for a lot of folks, and I, you know, from what Mr. Stahlheim said today, and I haven't talked to him outside of this, but I, I've been advocating for mediation, and from what I heard tonight, we could get an extension and possibly work it out and get the things we really want by working collaboratively instead of just, you know, going, going to fight, even though I understand that impulse.
I just want to weigh in on that and say that I think that we have worked collaboratively. We've taken this issue, these issues from 24 issues down to, currently, we're working on eight. We've got language that we believe our, that our planning commission, our planning department, the community as a whole has heard and has had an opportunity to comment on, and I don't think that we're fighting. We're actually trying to come into compliance here. So I would be happy to sit down and talk about the issues, but I think that you do that before you have an appeal deadline looming on July 3rd, and, and I think we're working on this, Councilmember Mann. So, I mean, I think we need to pass this. This takes care of the latest round of appeals, and then if the folks at Futurewise want to tell us that we're still not in compliance and want to work with it, then we can work with it, but we don't really have, I mean, the process is, we're at the end of the process. We're not at the beginning of the process, so...
Well, just to respond to that, I have been advocating for this approach alone.
Yes, you have. You have.
And if, I, I don't think this is going to be in compliance, and I didn't think about that. I didn't think the last round was going to be in compliance either. I voted for it anyway, but this time I'm still, I still don't think we're going to be in compliance, and I'm probably not going to vote for it.
Well, two-thirds of the last round were found in compliance, because we went from 24 issues to eight. We're working on it. We're trying to get there.
It's taking a very, very long time.
It is, but that's government. It's good government to be careful and considerate.
Councilmember Brenner?
Yeah, I'm go, well, he had his hand up before me, so...
Councilmember Cremmon?
Thank you. That's very generous and courteous of you. Thank you. You know, I'd been approached six months ago, or maybe even longer, by Mr. Stahlheim to, to mediate this, and I was pretty receptive to the idea. I think, at the time, I thought there really was the potential to strike an accord that would be fair to all in the end. Unfortunately, the will of the council at that time was not conducive. I don't think there was enough, in my opinion, I don't think there was enough support to, to go that route. But I do have to say that Councilmember Kirchner's assertion that, you know, that we have really tried to find the middle ground and try to be reasonable and, and strike a balance, I think we really, I think we've achieved that, and it's been evidenced in the fact that, you know, we've gone from 24 issues out of compliance down to eight. I happen to concur with Councilmember Mann. I, I have doubts that if we are to pass what this document, the way it is tonight, to the hearings board, that it will pass muster, that it, but, you know, you never know. But I do want to say, and I think this is probably the appropriate time, you know, I want to put this in context, because Watcom County, in my opinion, has, has really gone the extra mile to try to get into compliance with the Growth Management Act in spite of what, what everybody's perception is. I, at the time, when I was county executive, and Mr. Stahlheim was our planning department director, worked very closely, actually, and we were trying to get the county into compliance. The council, as was pointed out by Mr. Stahlheim earlier, it was a different council, and what we passed, what the council passed, was not what the administration put forward. But I asked Mr. Stahlheim, why is it Watcom County's not in compliance, and why is it so hard? Why do I get all these calls from the planning department, or actually from people that have been dealing with the planning department, three, four, five times a day from different constituents who found it unable to work with the planning department, or at least get what they wanted from the planning department, permits for whatever? And the response from Mr. Stahlheim was, Pete, Watcom County has some of the strictest, if not the strictest, land use regulations in the state of Washington. And I think that conversation, I think I had two conversations that, that expressed that, that sentiment. And I find it very frustrating, because I think Watcom County, the county organization, the administration and the council, has really tried to be more receptive and be, you know, go the extra mile to try to, to get in compliance. But it, you know, Watcom County, no matter what we do, the way the system's set up, the way the legislature, and I'm to blame because I was there, but we didn't understand at the time, we had no idea that these Growth Management Hearings Boards were going to, were going to be unbridled, with no accountability, and in this particular case, with the hearings board that we're dealing with, in my opinion, has overstepped its bounds, has been unreasonable, and we find ourselves in the situation that we are, out of compliance. But having said all that, I think that there's some merit, and maybe the potential, to work with, work with Futurewise and those involved in, you know, opposing what we've put forward every step of the way, and, and maybe there really is a sincere and genuine willingness on their part, because I know there is on our part, to try to come to some sort of a compromise, meeting of the minds, give and take, whatever you want to call it, and finally get this issue behind us and ultimately get in compliance with the Growth Management Act.
Councilmember Brenner?
I agree with a lot of what you say about working with them. I personally feel like it's, I don't think it's going to take that much time to submit the appeal, and I do think our attorney's pretty good at that. So we could, I just like the foot in the door with this, because I don't want this to keep dragging on, and I'm concerned that we'll go six more months and then we'll be back to where we are now. I, I feel like the little extra amount of time it would take to submit the appeal, not even, and then, you know, they can work with us and we can work with them. There's one thing, I have not heard this word mentioned at all tonight, and very rarely at any other time. The, we do not know if we are in, I believe we are in compliance with the Growth Management Act. What we're not in compliance with is a political decision from a political board, and this, they're not, they were supposed to be sort of a mediation board, and actually they were supposed to help prevent us from being in court, and it's just added an extra layer. The word that I've been thinking about so much is deference. Deference is supposed to be paid to the county unless we are just, you know, clearly out of compliance. There have been so many of these little pick, pick, pick things, and we've, we've, you know, let, we've compromised and compromised and compromised, and I have never said anything publicly rude to anybody in Futurewise or anybody else, so I kind of do resent those comments. I said the hearings board is a political body, and they sure are, and so I'm stating a fact, and that makes me rude? I just, I feel like, you know, there was a threat made tonight that, you want to play hardball? Okay, fine, let's play hardball, and we'll just keep doing this. I don't think, I think there's a problem there, too. I'm okay. I would like to work with them and work some things out, but I feel like we have just given away, you know, so many people's concerns and promises and all kinds of things. I, I'm just not sure. I don't want to do it without at least filing the appeal, because if we can't work it out with them, then we don't have to wait another six months. That's all. I, I agree with a lot of what you said.
Councilmember...
Here, we dealt with that earlier. This is a... ............................................................................................................ money going back and forth, and it seems like it would make more sense to have a conversation if they're willing to delay the deadline and find out. So they asked for four reasonable voices. It sounds like there's three of us up here. Is there one more?